I think we're off here. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order for the last six, and I know we're hoping to all get out of here somewhere around 8:15. So with that, I wonder if we could start off with a video review.
Sure, there are no items to add to this. Just gonna do the subdivision quickly and then we'll move on to more. Okay, Twitter issues that on the panel?
Yeah, why don't we do an introduction? Let's skip it like last time.
Okay. No.
Hi, Anne.
Amanda, introduce yourself.
Oh, hi, I'm Amanda, Amanda, and I'm the planning of this system.
Joan Cornish, Director of Plin.
Lisa Nicholas, Deputy Director of Plin.
Adam Walters, and then the attorney at Phillips Lidle, as a counsel to the board.
Jack Elliott, unboard member.
Karen Peller, board members.
Kenzie Jones, member of the board.
Rob Lewis, Board Chair.
Matt Johnston, member of the board.
Emma Patrignan, member of the board.
Mitch Glass, member of the board.
So the first project on our agenda is the major subdivision at Cherry Street. This is a consideration of final approval. Preliminary approval was done at last meeting approximately a week ago, maybe exactly a week ago. Is there any discussion on this matter, given we discussed it last time? Any comments, thoughts, questions, or the rule? Does anyone have a motion on the Orange Resolution for final approval? And Kenzie, is there a second? Have not. Any discussion? Checking again. Seeing none. All those in favor of final approval for the major subdivision at Cherry Street? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. We're already ahead of schedule too.
Josh, you have ten minutes.
Next is the North Tampa's residential expansion, which there's a lot to go through. Number one is board discussion and questions on the interview section. We've heard a lot from the public and from the applicant got interviewed, and this session tonight was envisioned as a work session for the board to sort of dive into the matters that have been brought to our attention, decide how we want to address it, help the council, sort of see what we can and cannot consider, and what the right way to think about some of these things are. With that, I'm gonna try to say as little as possible and make sure we hear from all members of the board as much as we can, and we will, of course, turn to our council when we have questions that you can help us navigate. Jack, can I start with you, or should... Oh, no, I'm gonna start with Lisa.
Well, I mean, however you want to do it, it's totally fine, but I just wanted to say that we, Adam and I were discussing that it would be helpful if he could give an overview of, you know, like a secret refresher and apply to this particular project, and then talk about the D E C's guidance on energy.
That sounds great. Let's do that.
Whatever point you want, just put that in if you want to talk.
No, I think that's, I think that's a fine thing to begin with. I think that helps all of us.
Okay. And so, I'm happy to do that. I'm gonna encourage you to pick up right where you just left off, which is a good board discussion of these issues, because at the end of the day, you are the lead agency for Seeker, and this will be your determination. But I guess it would make sense just to take a step back. So just a refresher, you've all been through the Seeker process quite a bit. Every project that goes through the planning board has to go through a Seeker review. See, you know the details, but let's just take a step back and do an overview, just so it's fresh in everybody's mind, and then perhaps we can spend a few minutes just focusing on energy and the D E C guidance that's out there for purposes of reviewing energy impacts and features. So, high level, remember what you're obligated to do for Seeker. There's a three-part test, if you will, that a court will find evaluating whether a board or lead agency complied with Seeker. You have to, one, identify the relevant areas of environmental concern; two, take a hard look at them; and, three, provide a reasoned elaboration, a basis for any determination you make, be it a determination that there are no potentially significant adverse impacts of neg deck, or that there are potentially significant adverse impacts of pos deck. But that's the, that's basically the three-part test. The obligation, I think the word reasonable and reasonably appears in Seeker, the regulations 20, 30 times. It is what the court stress. What is reasonable does depend on the circumstances. Uh-huh. So, we see in Seeker, there's a lot of flexibility in how the board wants to approach it. Again, you are the lead agency. Courts have said they will not weigh the desirability of the project or the action, or choose between alternatives. Again, the alternative analysis, the benefits of the project, that's all aside, we're really focusing on potential environmental impacts. The issue at the end of the day is whether the board comes to its determinations in a reasonable fashion. So, basic rules of the road for any Seeker review. I like to remind folks when we're talking about Seeker compliance, it's very easy to get caught up in part one, part two, and part three, and think that the determination of significance is somehow a mathematical equation. You're gonna have two and two, and you're gonna have four, and if it's four, you have to do an E I S. That is absolutely not how Seeker works. It's a substantive analysis. Again, it's, it's a rule of reason. The ultimate decision of whether to issue a neg deck or a pos deck in requiring environmental impact statement, if you do an E I S, or if you do a pos deck, is really a policy decision. So, courts have said that several times, me of Court of Appeals has said, termination of whether requiring an E I S is a policy decision. So, it's not, it's not math. It's about taking a look at the issue and coming to a reasoned conclusion that makes sense to you as a group, as the lead agency. So, a lot of discretion, really at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to what makes sense to you, what you as a group find a reasonable approach on the evaluation of the energy impacts. With that said, I have had a chance to go through a lot of the information. Lisa has shared with me, obviously, the applicant's information, all of the comments received, the summary of the comments received since the last meeting, a lot of information and material floating around there. So, with that in mind, just taking a moment, we spent some time, my, my staff spent some time looking at specifically what guidance is available to aid the board as in evaluating the energy impacts of the project. And a lot of concern about upstream impacts. Project will obviously use natural gas, and the concern is that the natural gas is frank gas. Like I can tell you from what I know, research, all natural gas in the Northeast United States comes from Pennsylvania, it's frank gas. It's no different in terms of burning it, but now you get it out of the ground, has raised concerns among some about leakage and methane and those kinds of things. So there's been a lot of discussion about that and what you as a board must do to look at that. So, I'll simply give you the guidance that's available. There's, there's really two relevant sources of guidance from my perspective. The first is the F V A F workbook. I'm sure you all have a copy. It's available on the D E C website. It is extremely user-friendly. With links inside, you can jump around quite a bit. But it's got under part two, a discussion of energy impacts, and how a board completing part two might look at those issues. And basically, your task is to identify, from an energy perspective, looking at some sub-questions, whether there are large to moderate impacts, moderate to large impacts, or none to small, right? That's kind of the classification. I have seen a lot of approaches to how to mark the boxes. Some boards will take the position, you know, if it's, if it's, there's an impact there, but it's mitigated, maybe it's none to small. My own preference is, if you exceed some of the narrative criteria that the D E C gives you, you mark moderate to large, and then when you get to part three of the E A F, that's where you focus on your moderate to large impacts, and that's where you decide and evaluate mitigation, and whether the impact has been mitigated such that there's no significant adverse impact. So, with that in mind, you have four parameters that the D E C offers for purposes of energy impacts and evaluating. They are, does the project require new or upgrade to an existing substation? The answer here is no, to my knowledge, based on the E A F. I can tell you part one says no. The extension or energy transmission or supply systems, the extension of those. I know I've seen some commentary from the public that sort of argues that this is an extension, but typically in the Seeker world, in my experience, what we're talking about is the need to bring energy lines or new transmission lines or pipelines to a site, where you're really coming from off-site. That's the extension of transmission lines. There may be additional transmission lines internal to a site, but that's typically considered more of a project specific to things that are gonna be covered by your review, right? This is trying to pick up things that you might miss, or any site-specific site. So, I view that one as a no, but obviously you have to make your determination. May utilize more than 2,500 megawatt-hours of electricity? That's a pretty straightforward one, and I believe the answer on that one is yes for the project. And then eating or cooling more than 100,000 square feet of building, definitely a yes for this project, although we have 767,000 square feet. So, that's just a starting point of that one, and that's not the end of the equation. That's evaluating the part two, and that's the guidance the D E C offers. You really do need to have a really thorough discussion of that as you evaluate the information you have. Have that group discussion, I think that's really important, to see where the board, what the knowledge base is, what we understand, the facts to do. Those are really good things to go through. The other thing we have that kind of offers some guidance is the D E C policy for assessing greenhouse gas emissions and E I Ss. So, this is if you issue a pos deck. I will tell you this policy is only applicable to the D E C, so it only applies where they are doing an environmental impact statement that involves G H D emissions. However, D E C wrote the Seeker regulations, they wrote the Seeker handbook, really helpful information. So, I, I, I think it's safe to say it's good guidance for how you might evaluate some of these things. The, the things I would highlight, it's a lengthy policy. I know some of you have seen it, some of you have not. It's another thing, it's very easy to find on the D E C website as you move forward, and encourage you to review it. But if I were to high-level it for you, I would say there's a distinguish, distinguishing between direct and indirect impacts from a project, from a greenhouse gas emissions perspective. Upstream impacts are generally considered indirect. Indirect, how do we, how do we evaluate indirect impacts in an E I S? What, what the D E C highlights for you is that it can be more of a qualitative analysis rather than a quantitative analysis. So if you think about E I Ss where you evaluate secondary, long-term cumulative impacts, it's, the purpose of including that information in your A I S is really disclosure. It's about showing your math, showing your homework, showing that you thought about the issues. You're not doing necessarily a detailed impact analysis, a quantitative way you quantify what is the issue and what is the best way to mitigate it, so we can determine that all adverse impacts have been mitigated to the maximum extent practicable, which is what's required under the E I S process. There is a lot of discussion in here about mitigation and how you evaluate that, and I guess I would say at the end of the day, the, the, the analysis kind of mirrors part three, where you're really looking at whether mitigation has mitigated or minimized emissions to the greatest extent practicable. There's kind of a parallel analysis there. So, that's what I got for you high level. I mean, at the end of the day, your job is to be reasonable. You have to decide how far upstream you need to go. Again, Seeker says the scope of your analysis is, must be reasonable, and reasonable is dependent on the circumstances. You have a lot of facts before you. How far upstream you go, how deep you go on those upstream impacts really is, I believe, under Seeker as lead agency within your sound discretion, and I just encourage you to discuss it and decide what you think as a group makes sense for that analysis. I think based on the record before us, one could easily use this record as a basis for a neg deck, or one could easily use this basis, this record as a basis for a pos deck. The answer is, it could go either way, and it's up to you to decide. So, it's...
Thanks, Lloyd.
Yeah, no, so the lawyer doesn't give the cover. At the end of the day, really, that's, that's what it's about.
Adam, can I ask a question regarding segmentation? Whether energy is a topic maybe worthy of segmentation? I won't ask anything deep enough, but maybe you can provide it.
Sure.
What is segmentation? What is the process?
Yeah, so segmentation. What is it? Segmentation is dividing an environmental review for a project into little pieces, and you neg deck each little piece, and you never have to do an E I S. So, classic example is a highway. You're building 10 miles of highway, you look at one-mile segments, and well, there's a quarter acre wetland here, there's an historic farmhouse here. If we look at it in little pieces, we never have to say adverse impact we should do an E I S. Can't do that. Seeker regulations explicitly prohibit segmentation, except under very narrow circumstances. And we sometimes struggle when we're looking at how far the environmental impact review level needs to go, with is it really, is it segmentation if we don't look at it? In this instance, we're not talking really about segmentation. We're not talking about, you know, the impacts of fracking and extraction are a completely separate issue in a different state. Though they are, you are looking right now, the issue on the table is, for purposes of the environmental review of this project, what, what do we need to be looking at, and are there significant adverse impacts that require the preparation of an E I S? As you think about that, of course, you know, in the back of your mind, I think policy issues that have to be out there is, well, okay, what could you do about it, right? So, what's the mitigation? It's certainly not creating methane capture requirements or anything like that. There's a whole process that goes on, obviously, a regulatory process well beyond Seeker, because again, we're beyond the borders of the state of New York. Pennsylvania has its own rules, federal rules. All of that applies and layers over. At the end of the day, it comes back to this project. You're taking a hard look at this project, and how far upstream you go, I think you have some flexibility. I don't really view it as a segmentation issue.
Other questions for council before we move on to more of an internally focused discussion? You mentioned a question of policy. Could you dive into that just a little bit?
Sure. So, the determination of whether to require an environmental impact statement, again, it's not math. You're taking a hard look at potential adverse impacts. There's a fair amount of discretion for you to decide whether you think there are potentially significant adverse impacts that require a preparation of an environmental impact statement, or whether there are no potentially significant adverse impacts, you've taken a good look at them, and a neg deck is appropriate. So what are those policy considerations? What does that kind of involve, entail? It's really, from my perspective, it's environmental policy. So, I think the whole purpose of Seeker is, I mean, boiled down to a nutshell, if you can, with Seeker, is to mitigate adverse environmental impacts. That's the whole reason we do an E I S when it's required. We're saying that there are potentially significant adverse impacts. We have to really do a detailed study of those issues and identify appropriate mitigation, because at the end of day, you're certifying, at the end of that process, from amongst the reasonable alternatives available, you have picked the alternative that minimizes adverse environmental impacts in the maximum extent practicable. So, part of that policy decision to me is, well, what would we get? Would we get any additional analysis from an environmental impact statement? Would there be any benefits to the process? Would we get a better decision if we went through an E I S? Those are some of the, I think, policy implications. I'm sure you can think of some others, but that's, that's the concept, and again, that really has to be a board-led discussion of what you think's appropriate. Would you, would you get value out of doing an environmental impact statement? I have some thoughts on that, but I'm not gonna, I wanna see you discussing the question.
We will get your wish. Other questions for council before we open it up for ourselves? All right. Should I pick on Jack, or do we have a volunteer?
You can pick on me.
Awesome.
So, well, energy is kind of a vague concept, and you can't see it. It's tricky to measure sometimes, and I think often when we talk about energy in this context, we're focusing on assumable energy, energy that is easier to quantify, so operational energy, thermal, electrical. But there might be, and this is maybe a broader question, but you can also look at energy in terms of embodied energy, which is the, the energy that's captured in the materials that you use to build it, for example. Or you look at the ability of that building at the end of its life to easily be disassembled, and how that embodied damage of energy is recaptured, rather than just destroying it and sending it to a landfill. So, for me, an energy question is much broader than what comes to a pipeline or a transmission line. Water, for example, requires energy to purify and to pump and all that. So, energy consumption is closely tied to water consumption. They're not separate issues in that area. So, those, I don't know if that's possible to kind of bring in that larger picture of energy, especially with regards to the D E C, because, you know, the policy is often lagging behind the realities of environmental degradation. You know, I just heard a comment today, I was reading, and they were talking about carbon pollution, and they were talking, at first when I saw that, I thought they were talking about particulates. They were talking about CO2. It's now considered a pollutant. It's not just, you know, something that off-gasses, it's really, but that, that sort of concept isn't really reflected in the D E C policy. They don't see it as a toxic, disruptive pollutant. So, I don't know if the municipality does, or what the policy is regarding toxic pollutants in Ithaca, but, and maybe, maybe that's a little too progressive for this board. I believe if it is gonna be policy, that we apply it to every project that comes across the table. It's not just something we pick on Cornell for, but anybody who's doing anything that is gonna consume frac gas, whether it's a hotel downtown, or a new housing development on the waterfront, they all have to pass the same kind of litmus test. Of course, the scale of this is basically more impactful, but it's, it really, if it's about policy, then it should be about policy. So I don't know if we're in a position where we can be that progressive in our policy as it stands now. I doubt it. I think it's sort of casting yesteryears' concepts about what energy is and how that's thought about. My view, it should go much further than that, but that's, I think, beyond the purview of this, of this board. That's something that might have, you know, maybe, maybe common council does that, maybe the D E C does that. I don't know of a, another municipality in New York State that's maybe more prospective. Maybe there is one, but, and we're working on a green building sort of code for the city, but A, it's not in place yet, and B, maybe by the time it is in place, it's not going far enough, you know? So, so those are just my comments, just provocations.
Your?
Well, my, my thinking's very similar to Jack's, which is I look back, I've been this board for a bad few years. I look back on all the projects we reviewed, and the sort of level of detail in which the environmental, of which the energy usage model has been considered in this project exceeds that of any other project that I voted for in the last eight years. And so, you know, judging on a sort of historical basis, and I'm not saying that's the right basis, just based on precedent versus this project, you know, I see this project in terms of energy exceeding the bar that's been set based on precedent. Now, maybe precedent's the wrong bar to look at, maybe the, the bar should be changed, but on that basis, it seems to me that this project, in terms of energy, is better than anything we've considered. Now, the question might be, should we look at this project differently? And the two reasons maybe that we should look at this project differently, and Adam, I appreciate your input on this, but the two reasons that I've heard are, I'm just remembering, remembering Jack's comments, are, one, love the size. And so one question I'd ask of Adam is, how should we consider this project relative to, say, the same type of project divided across 10 buildings? So we're looking here at, say, 2,000 beds. If we had 10 projects of 200 beds, we would look at it differently in terms of scale and impact. In other words, is the scale the total number of beds, or is the scale the energy uses, energy usage divided by the number of beds? Is it a per capita scale or an absolute scale? That's one question. The second comment I've heard a lot in the last couple months from, from the public is that this applicant is different from other applicants, and I'd also appreciate some, some thoughts on that. Obviously, the applicant's different, but my, my sort of, my a priori reaction would be that all applicants should be considered the same, but I appreciate comments on that. Now, then if you say, okay, well, we should look at this project with a different bar compared to prior projects, then sort of the third question I have is, and I don't know if the answer is we should look at it differently or not, but if the answer is we should look at this differently than precedent projects, then the question is an engineering one. I hear the applicant saying, well, this is a better project in terms of energy usage than what the public and what, what some members of the public have proposed. So then, in other words, if we were to go with alternative energy models that have been proposed, that would actually make things worse. And I think there's some compelling evidence to suggest that, but, you know, I'm not an energy engineer, I can't make that case. And so I think the question is, if we go to that, you know, what, upon what basis, if we get to that stage, you know, how do we evaluate the claim that one model is better than another, when it's actually quite a complicated question?
Okay, well, excuse me, there was a lot in there. So, let's try to unpack those one at a time. I think your first question was the size of the project, and what impact does that have, and would we be looking at it differently if these were ten different projects? And I guess I have two thoughts on that. First, certainly the overall size of the project matters when you're evaluating whether there are potential significant adverse impacts. Type one projects are more likely to have significant adverse impacts. That whole type one list is designed to point you in a direction for larger projects. Later on in part two, when we're doing part two of the full E A F, a lot of those questions, those thresholds, heating for more than 100,000 square feet, those are also designed to point you in a direction for bigger projects. They're not absolutes. Again, it's not math, it's about taking a hard look at the issues and considering them carefully. Certainly if you do environmental reviews every project, but imagine, not required, but you could do a single environmental review for every set of projects on an agenda every month, right? Instead of individual seekers, one seeker, some would argue that's more protective. It's certainly not required, but do you get a benefit from that cumulative? At the end of the day, I, I think that's why we have the reasonableness standard, because you could make yourself crazy, I think, trying to be perfect, and come up with a perfect environmental review for every project to make sure every potential issue has been exhaustively analyzed and addressed. But that's not, to be clear, that's not what Seeker requires. It requires you to take a hard look at the issues, to consider them, and you're doing that right now. But it doesn't require a specific outcome. That's really you as a board. You had said perhaps those decisions are beyond us. They're not. You're the lead agency, so whatever this board thinks is appropriate, the city may decide to do something else, others may give direction on formal policy down the road, but for tonight, for this project, you're the decision-maker on how far this goes. Your second question about are all applicants the same? I'm agnostic when it comes to applicants. All projects are not the same, but all applicants are the same. So, doesn't matter who the applicant is, it's about the project, the proposed action, and what are the potential adverse impacts, if that's helpful.
Kenzie?
Thank you. There's a lot of conflict around this project, and when I spoke before saying that I don't feel good about it, that's what I'm specifically referring to. There are a lot of things I feel really good about this, the building, this specific project. I don't feel bad about the conflict, I just wanna make sure that the applicants are aware of that. Building upon the idea that Cornell's different, that this is a different applicant, different project, sort of wanna talk about why. One, of course, is the scale of this project. Also, one is that Cornell has made a very specific commitment to reducing their energy usage. use to a certain type at a certain time, and this project does not seem aligned with that. The life cycle of this building that's being proposed does not seem to fit in with those timeline goals of energy reduction, greenhouse gas emission. And also, Cornell's different because they're the only applicant I'm aware of that is producing this energy. And that opens up a lot that I think is just uncharted for this board, and contributing to some of that conflict among the public. My general feeling that I share with board members who have spoken already is that the, our current protocol is not sufficient across the board, across applicants, across projects. At some point in time, we want to have more strict energy regulations at this level. When and how we decide to do that, I'm hearing is largely up to us. Also, it's going to happen in the middle of some project. We're always in the middle of conducting seeker and site plan review. And so, I have my own conflict, thinking like, well, can we try to change, can we push the needle in the middle of this project? Anytime we push the needle, it's going to be in the middle of some project. And because Cornell is different in the ways that I've mentioned, maybe it makes sense to be pushing the needle in that way. I think that those are things that we're trying to address tonight, but far beyond I want to see this project succeed. I'm, I'm in favor of many things about it, and I feel a little unsure about how to deal with those conflicts of energy production. I mean, we should be talking about upstream energy a lot. We all know that, we know that we should be talking about upstream energy more than we do. We all want to. We don't have, we don't have seeker support for it, yet. And I just, yeah, I don't know how to deal with an applicant that's producing their own energy. I feel really unsure about how, how to address that. I don't feel that the DEC policy, like, has a lot of guidance for us. I think that what we, the rigorousness through which we end up putting this project and this applicant, I think, needs to become standard, even though it is not precedent yet, I do not think that that means that Cornell can be absolved of it, nor do I think that hotels and apartment buildings should be either. That's all I have to say.
So, some of that was, was questions, I thought, or I felt. Do you, does council have a reaction to any of that, or?
The only thing I'd clarify there is, in terms of my view that applicants are relevant, many of those things you mentioned is applicant-specific, I view as project-specific. So, the fact that this project does have an onsite facility to generate the steam, and how lot, and electricity for the project, I view that as kind of a project issue, not an applicant's issue. So, but those are really important points. Again, I guess I, I'm going to try to steer you away from precedent, because precedent doesn't bind you, except to the extent you feel it does. You have discretion, so it really does come down to what you think makes sense.
We're liberated from how we have.
You are liberated. That's a very dangerous thing, but that is the reality. You are the lead agency for seeker purposes, and you do have the authority. And in fact, when you make this decision, all interested involved agencies are bound by it. They can't do their own thing. So, there's, there's a lot that goes into that. On the other hand, it is, we are in an evolving area of this, right? As you point out, the DEC guidance would be for, say, an electrical or a natural gas fired power station. This is what they would use in EIS, and they would, using this guidance, like, we do a qualitative, high-level narrative acknowledging that there are upstream impacts, quantifying them in some way, and then that's, you've disclosed if you will. So, it is an evolving area, and that is, that is appropriate for the policy, but I do, to keep in mind.
Matt? Some of the specifics within this policy, we see them outlined in this handy guide, some folks may have had times. There are certainly topics and subtopics therein, building design and operation measures, efficiency mitigation measures, transportation, of course, site selection, design measures, that don't just apply, say, to the planning and development of a power plant, but exactly to a project of this nature. They also know, and you've stated clearly, that municipalities, they use this as a guidance, but are not bound, you know, or able to enforce, right? But I feel it important for us to take some of the elements within this guidance and do our best to discuss them, as you said, qualitatively, there, you know, a cogent analysis with which to engage that dialogue, hopefully push the applicant to do something that's not just bread and butter at this point in stage, but nods towards the evolution of, you know, in as quick as possible, we all know, what some of the most dire predictions are. But, you know, I think this could be a great demonstration project for going up and beyond what would be considered par for the course when it comes to building design, you know, buildings that are being designed, you know, primarily as glass. And with, you know, plenty of caulk and glazing, we know, you know, maybe delivered in the most energy-efficient fashion, but then people move in, right, and occupancy behavior. And how those buildings are maintained over time, how they're taken care of, can immediately start having a detrimental effect on the efficiency performance of those buildings. And I just hope, you know, we're able to talk, you know, a bit more deeply into the putting out reforms, through the process, about hitting some of the marks in this policy, even though they're not, you know, we're apparently not able to enforce them, because I think that it will advance the conversation both for work that this board wants to do, that the city wants to do, and I really believe what the applicant wants to do in the long run.
Kimless?
As I review all information, I typically fall back on our colleagues, and I feel that, you know, the applicant has mitigated adverse impacts to the extent of, you know, being 30% plus above code on a lot of the energy issues is a high bar. So, with that in mind, there's still a conflict, right? In an ideal world, I would want the applicant in the project to say, okay, can we do a hybrid system? You know, everything that has been explored on the energy analysis done by TUDAM and proposed by Cornell is either the combined heat and power plant and like source cooling or ground source heat pump core, right? So, I would love for the applicant to say, okay, let's use 80% of our energy system in like source cooling, eliminate any natural gas use above what we're doing now, and supplement with these other systems. So, that's the main question that I find could be elaborated on, and if we have the ability to sort of set a new precedent in exploring that, I think this is a good situation to be in.
Mitch?
I tried to just break down my thoughts into sort of four points. The first point is, I think it's a good project. I think it's good for Cornell, and I think it's good for the city of Ithaca and town of Ithaca more broadly. So, I want to see it happen, I think that's what Mackenzie said, and I think that's, it would be a good thing. I think we all have the same goal to protect the environment, protect the earth, protect the globe, and I, you know, I, I hope that's clear to the public, that, you know, as a board, I think to a person, we're, we're very much aligned with that kind of thinking. But we have a job to do, so we're kind of working our way through. My second point is, the amount of sort of comments that we've received and the feedback from the public has been, you know, very powerful. It's really surprised me, you know, being new to the board and hearing this kind of public comment, which kind of has led me to question some of the science or some of the findings that Cornell has proposed. And I, I've gone through that, like Emily, I've read through it. I'm not an expert in it, but I've also read through the supplemental information that Cornell has provided more recently, which have been kind of what I was looking for, which were more specific responses to the public comments. And to me, that sort of pushed me towards an acceptance of Cornell's strategies, their analyses, and their, the way they're handling projects. I think that had an impact on my thinking, and also, sort of in the context of other things that Cornell is doing beyond this project, you know, seeing this project holistically in terms of their climate goals and other things they're doing, other actions they're taking at other facilities on campus. The third point I have then is the FE AF, which you brought up, Adam. And I think the three points, the thresholds that you were talking about for the DEC, the thresholds, to, to, to see if we could have, if we would have a positive declaration, which were creation of energy transmission or supply systems to serve more than 50 single or two-family residences. I think, you know, there's, I think the project goes beyond that. If you, if you, if you relate it to the number of homes that this would actually be equivalent to. The proposed action utilizing more than 2,500 megawatts per hour, but it exceeds that, like you said, and the, the action involving heating or cooling more than 100,000 square feet. So, so I think those are yes answers for me on those, which I think is important. And I know there are mitigations to these, and I, and for me, I want to hear more about the mitigations before I just say, okay, answering yes to those questions just automatically gets in the positive deck. What are the mitigations? I really want to hear more about that. So, that, that was my third point. And I think the fourth point for me is trying to wrap my head around an EIS and what it means, both for the institution in terms of a timeline. And I think we heard at the last board meeting in September that Cornell has undertaken EIS for other projects, I think two other projects, which really surprised me, because I think this would be a situation where they might consider doing another one. Why aren't they moving in that direction, or are they proposing that, or are they not? Is the timeline such that it's a burden to construction activity or some future target date? And so, what exactly are we talking about in terms of timeframe, both for an EIS and the impacts that might have?
Okay, well, another question. I think you're, to be clear, I, I think your analysis on the part two is on, I mean, we could debate whether this is creation or extension of an energy facility, even that it's there, it's got the capacity, but you're the lead agency, you get to decide that. At the end of the day, all of, if you check one energy box or three energy boxes, you're still checking potentially significant, and then it becomes a question of mitigation. So, I think you're dead on there. It really comes down to what is the mitigation, and is it enough to satisfy everybody that this does it? In terms of EISs, I, I mean, I have not been involved, I don't know what a lot of the background has been, but I, I don't think there's a, let's not do an EIS, it's a terrible idea. It tends to be, it's a very complicated process. It tends to drag out. It's just a natural, it's got so many layers and levels that it takes a while. Chainworks, where I'm counsel to the board, we're on year four of the EIS for Chainworks. And, I mean, it's easy to get bombed down in an EIS process, there's a lot of back and forth. And again, it becomes a question of value, what's the value, what do you get out of it? So, from a timing perspective, seeker, an EIS process, as of January 1st, scoping is mandatory. Scoping is a process that happens, if you break an EIS preparation into three stages, scoping, you analyze and develop what's going to be looked at in an EIS, in an EIS statement, draft, there's a draft of the environmental impact statement, ultimately accepted by the board, issued for public comment, final, final is a response to all comments and updates to the EIS that are, the draft that are necessary as a result of those comments. Three stages, 60 days for scoping, from the time you get it to, till it's, it's final. Sometimes it's a little less, sometimes it can be a little more, because after 60 days, draft becomes final. D E I S, once it's prepared and submitted and accepted, you've got a minimum 30-day comment period, usually goes a little longer for complex projects, 45, 60 days, no matter how long you go for. I've never been in an EIS where someone didn't say, we need more time! So, you almost get, always get a comment asking for another 15 days, another month. So, you figure that out, but you've got a review process, and then you take all those comments, and if I'm not mistaken, these are the comments that have come in in the last 30 days on this project. That's, this is, so, volume-wise, this is something I think you probably would expect a little more for an EIS. You're going to have an awful lot of comments that you need to classify, characterize, and that every substantive comment of the draft EIS needs to be individually responded to by this board. So, it's, it's just a process. Again, there's value to it, it's a hard look, a really deep level, there's real upsides to an EIS from an environmental impact perspective, from a policy perspective, from an involvement of public and having a say in ultimately what, what's coming out. And there are downsides. I mean, you can easily get bombed down. I've been in many EISs where, you know, there are project opponents, and they say the same thing on day one as they say after you approve the project, after an EIS. They never get quite satisfied, right? It's, so, there's a lot that goes into the decision, but ultimately, it's got to be yours. But if you were preparing an EIS, I would say the quickest you're going to get through it with that is, you know, seven, eight months, could easily be a year, could be two. That's timeline issues. But I, I guess I would emphasize, timeline issues for an EIS really not a central policy consideration when you're taking your policy look at whether to acquire an EIS, because those really, brings in considerations kind of a little bit beyond the seeker issues, the environmental impacts, those kind of things, really comes down to environmental impact.
Just before we talk, we have a member of the public in the hall, could we invite them to bring chairs in, or is there any more face art to take, to be clapping here in the hall?
Sure, let's, let's take a couple minutes to see if we can.
Scooch people over a little bit?
Yeah, that's a good idea here.
Everybody who's in the end.
Run for it. Thank you for resolving our crowd control. The applicant has requested a couple minutes to answer some of the concerns raised by the board.
Just a specific question about timeline and EISs.
Sure.
The rest of them, you have the information.
Yep.
Yeah. So, Cornell has undertaken the EISs for other projects in the past, just volunteer, it's like, we have, we have the time, and we're going to be studying these things anyway, we'll just go through the process. So, for this project, why is the timeline important? The timeline is important because if we, if we miss the construction season that begins this season, the labor force doesn't get work at home for this year, because we get the academic calendar and the project waits a year. And then, the EIS takes, it's going to take a year, maybe more. And so, the intent was not to shove anything down the front door, or to pull the wool over the public's eyes in any way, but to give really good information so that you could take a hard look and be reasonable about your decision-making. And so, I don't know if you're aware, but the document that Adam was talking about from the DEC for how to evaluate emissions in an environmental impact statement, that is the, that is the approach that Tatum took, and that we asked them to take. And those mitigations, Matt, that you're talking about, that are in that document, are on pages 193 and 199 of, of. So, the intent was not to be pushy, the intent was to give, arm the board with the data necessary to take a hard look and come to a reasonable decision. And, you know, from the project, from the project perspective, of course, it's not our decision, it's yours, you know, in terms of negative, adverse, significant environmental impact, we didn't see it. We still don't, but we're not the lead agency, so that's fine. And so, the intent was give you the information and make a decision. But the, but the timeline has real impacts, not just for the workforce, but also impacts on the housing, you know, the delay, the benefits that this project will bring. But again, Adam makes a very good point, that that's really not your focus right now. Your focus is, are, do you really think there's going to be a significant adverse impact, and what do you do about it? So, that answers your question.
And along the lines of the question of what might, what additional information might you get? might you get, if any? You know, we can all speculate. I will simply tell you that as a seeker attorney who writes a lot of EISs, if I were writing the energy section of this EIS, most, this information, the impacts on energy that the applicant has provided is what we, what I would provide. It would be an analysis of, here, here, here's the energy usage, here's the mitigation measures, we've balanced the numbers, and then you kind of go through the mitigation section in detail based on the policy, which is, as the applicant says, what we've done here. So it would be very similar, but, you know, obviously, if you, if you were to go down an EIS road, you would do scoping and that would really finalize what would be in there. But typically, what you add here is a lot of what you would see. For what that's.
Fair enough. So we managed to make it once around the room with the questions and concerns. We've heard a little bit of feedback of the applicant in terms of why they're choosing an approach and heard a lot of feedback from council about what the trade-offs might be about going down the EIS road. How are people feeling about the project, you know, with respect to energy? There's a lot of environmental issues at play here, but most of the public comment has been about energy. And so that's really where we're focusing, especially in the first part of this meeting, you know, if we don't move faster potentially to all this meeting, which is fine.
It's okay.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, if we can make a decision on energy today, I think this will be a day well spent. You know, I have my own thoughts, but I'm more interested in the rest of the board's. And I can just pick on Jack again.
But, yeah. Well, I have, I just want to make sure I've got everything straight. So as I understand it, this new expansion of residential facilities will not actually result in expansion of any of the energy-producing facilities, right?
I understand.
So you're, you're using the same equipment, operating at the same sort of capacities, within the same limits that you are now. So bringing these things on stream is just going to use existing infrastructure in the same way that it's already been used. We're not going to add more energy into the equation.
Yes. So, so to make clarify that, so this building will need energy, so it'll be incremental differences in energies applied into the plant to serve the building. But none of the equip, there's no capital equipment change.
So the turbines are turning the same speed, there's only one, you're not bringing in a new.
There's, there's two, actually.
Yeah, okay. But you're not bringing in a new one.
No.
You're not increasing the pipeline diameter. You see where I'm going here?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're working with the existing infrastructure as it operates today, and yet you're accommodating through various strategies to build these facilities and still work with them. You know, that's pretty good. That's a, that's not easy to do, is to be able to add more to the inventory, but keep your, your energy baseline pretty much the same. Have you guys worked it out in terms of watts per meter of energy consumption for these buildings?
We could, I haven't. We haven't.
I mean, there's a standard, you know, 50 watts per meter is pretty universally recognized as a, as a fairly aggressive but attainable standard. And I was just curious if.
If I had pen and paper, I could.
But I think that would also be good information because it's sort of a globally understood metric and that people can understand. But I think this idea, the only other thing is, I was here when you guys were earning coal. And when there was a new building going out, nobody said, hey, you know, does that mean we're getting more coal delivered up 366 every day, twice a day and all that? So when you, when the university switched to natural gas, I was happy about it, it's higher energy density, it's clean burning, all this kind of thing. But it's often been touted as the bridge fuel, right? It's the thing that's gonna get us from where we were to a better place in the future. And I'm kind of curious, maybe that could be articulated in this plan as, and it sort of relates to what Amy was saying about how this is what we're gonna do now, but we can hybridize that, or we can supplement that, or we see it as a bridge to this. So it's, it's not just cementing something into some situation you can't change, but if you could design a system so that it is flexible, which you sort of did with the COgen, I mean, you went from coal to natural gas, a brand-new building, you know. So I think if, if you kind of design for, for future technology, you design some flexibility in the system so other things can be brought in. Let's say the deep well work and, you know, then it would be just connecting something rather than tearing it off.
So can I respond to that one?
Yeah.
The, the buildings are designed with a low-temperature hot water system.
Yeah.
And the whole idea of having a district hot water system for this building and later for the whole campus.
Right.
Is that you can then feed energy, renewable energy into the, anywhere in the system. So a good example is Calhoun's doing an experiment with concentrate solar. And they heat up water and they can actually inject it and heat buildings with it, which they couldn't do before, okay? So when this completed, the idea is to have earth-source heat and to have any other systems that we can find, you know, maybe a little biomass that can be sustainably harvested, that kind of thing.
Calm.
That we can kind of, it's kind of like when you think of a grid has all these plants, some of them are renewable, some aren't, that are injecting electricity, we have the same thing on the hot water side, we have a hot water loop, we can inject energy anywhere in the system to serve a whole series of buildings. So that is the plan, right? To have completely renewable energy feeding this grid at some point.
Can I have just a point of clarity for, so right now, the campus buildings are like, are heated with the steam. And this building is being designed differently.
Yeah, right.
In order to have, be flexible for the future.
Right, yeah. So, and the other idea is that you decentral, I mean, there's some benefits for centralization, obviously, but there's also some benefits for decentralizing. For example, each building harnesses its own energy processes, its own waste, this kind of idea. So, you know, I don't, I guess, because the existing infrastructure is about decentralized, but maybe if you built in flexibility so that some buildings could then incorporate their own micro systems so that they could then take some of the burden away from the central plant, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And if you designed for that flexibility, I think that would be a good way to future-proof the building, is the term I would be using.
Can I piggyback on your comment a little bit? Let me get my notes. So my Tatum study, they, they said, we can't, we're not gonna use PVs. PVs have been ruled out, even though we have flat rooftops because they don't supply all the electricity necessary. So is there a scenario where we can say, we're gonna use 20% less from the direct, from the, sorry, CHPP, but use as much as we can from PVs? Or buying electricity from the grid that is dedicated from wind and solar? Is there some push and pull, like Jack, where we can, you know, take advantage of the rooftop, we can take advantage of these other systems in the buildings to supplement? And question for the board is, do we, or go ahead, John, or.
Well, so, so on a, on a global basis, that's what we're doing. I mean, you know, we, so as a campus-wide, we're developing photovoltaics in our sites, right? And we could, you know, say, put a plaque in the building, say, you know, the solar is for this building, but it's really just, we're doing it anyway. It's not, it's kind of a separate issue in a sense. We're, we're getting as much energy as we can, we're just not assigning it to, like, we have a hydro plant, so it's zero carbon, right? But we're not putting a plaque in the building, saying, well, we'll just say all the electric for this building, because it equals that, is now, you know, it doesn't make a difference in the, in the impact we have in the environment. So we don't, we're not doing that. A lot of people do that. I, I think that's grade-washing, actually, if you kind of say, you know, we built this solar thing out here and now we're just gonna say, you know, we're getting, we're getting energy credits, we're gonna retire them. We could just say, we're retiring against the building and now it's, it's, you know, it's carbon-free, but that's not, the building is still, when it turns on, it's gonna use energy. So, so I, you know.
Right, so then my question for the board is, do we feel better about this project if it's a little less efficient, but we're not using natural gas to power the onsite power plant? Because that's what I feel like the public wants to hear, that we're not using natural gas in onsite power plant. But the trade-off is that it's a less efficient thing.
So Cornell's never bought green power, right?
Yeah. Yes and no. So New York City, they, they, they're buying green power, but it's, there's, you know, this whole levels of green.
You mean, New York City campus?
Right, right.
Okay. Yeah, because that's an option.
It is an option.
And I remember when I was looking at being involved in some lead projects at Cornell before, that was off the table. That was something they were not gonna do, to buy green power. They had to figure out how to do it on their own. But, yeah. Maybe there's someone you have to speak to that.
So Bert, are we, are we buying green power anywhere else?
So I'm Bert Blan, I'm Associate Vice President for Energy Sustainability at Cornell, responsible for operation and energy system. So you're, you're correct, Jack. I think our approach has been to do projects that create additionality, which is sort of the buzzword, I mean, you've made an impact. Instead of going out and buying like national greenie certified wind wrecks, paying for the unbundled energy maybe made in the Midwest. So we are trying as hard as we can to create new projects. We've done five solar farms, 10 acres each, two megawatts each, and we hope that our developer breaks ground on 10 acres just east of campus in Dryden. It's been all through approvals and it's just, and it's been funded, so that's 18 megawatts headed to go. So yeah, you're, you're correct. We, instead of buying what I consider relatively.
Unimpactful?
Unimpactful, I was gonna say meaningless bouncing. Instead of, instead of buying a greenie certified wrecks that may have no additionality whatsoever, no impact on solar being made or wind that's being made, we prefer to have a real additional projects.
Okay, well, for example, you can buy New York-made wind power, right? Through a certain utility. And then it's, it's a market thing, a market-driven process, so the more people that buy that, the more turbines they put up. So I'm not sure if it's a zero-impact situation.
Right.
That it doesn't contribute to increasing the renewable energy quotient in the grid.
I think the market for wrecks is really good. It animates the market, it creates a cash stream that helps it. You're right, that we've not, and there is, there is specific New York State wind wrecks, and we have not, we're, we're actually now joined a consortium of higher education, about 16 higher education universities managed by SUNY Systems, it's called New York Cares, and it's to procure a lot of renewable energy. So we're, there's gonna be a procurement process going forward to actually, where we would actually, instead of just buying wrecks from projects that are already built, side-monitoring contracts so new projects will be built. And that's a, that's a project for a consortium that's underway.
Okay.
Yeah, it just sounds like the priority is to add.
Yeah.
Is to add renewables to the grid rather than buy them already.
Well, the advantage of buying is you can do it now.
I think Mackenzie has something.
Yeah.
Just sort of speaking to Ellie's question to the board. The project at hand, the North Campus Residential Expansion, the project, pretty great one, certainly compared to other projects. So really high, highly efficient, highly functional building. Where we're getting stuck is not with the usage of energy in that building, where we're getting stuck is the production of energy, and that's why this project feels different, because the production of that energy is connected to the usage of it very directly through the same applicant. The project at hand is not the plant or the production of energy. I think that we, as a board, need to address that on a much larger scale across all current and potential projects. If what we're worried about is fossil fuel use and upstream effects, then I don't think that this particular building is the appropriate place for that discussion.
So without a whole lot of more back and forth with the applicant, I think Mackenzie brings up a really important issue that I want to hear everybody to point on it. Since she started this, I'm just gonna go to my left and then we're gonna do the loop again. Matt?
I'm not ready to comment on this one.
Ah. Millip.
I'll be fast.
Yeah, nice.
Thanks, move.
I have trouble decoupling the two, the building from the production. If I look at just the building and just the project, I think that significant measures have been taken to mitigate the impact. But it's tough, I, I'm not ready to give a final answer on that one, I can split it too.
Mitch?
Yeah, it's not clear to me either. You know, information like we just received is fascinating to me because I'm getting a feel for the broader institutional context of what they're trying to achieve on several fronts. And we're just looking at this project so kind of myopically, like, we're just talking about these buildings and 2,000 units, but there are a whole host of other layers of strategies and innovations that are going on at the same time. And I think for me, it kind of comes down to a level of trust, like, do we trust that those things are actually occurring and occurring in positive ways and advancing ideas of sustainability? And to me, it comes across as reasonable and practical at this point in time. But again, I wanted to hear more about the mitigating impacts, so.
Jack, I'm gonna skip you and come back. Garrett?
So I agree with Mackenzie, there has to be a broader discussion moving forward about what does it mean to use fossil fuels, natural gas in particular, and all the adverse effects of that. But, you know, this is a good project, I think we all agree it's a good project, and we have to make a decision now, not, not 10 years from now. And when I look at the engineering today, the, you know, the engineering possibilities today, you know, I've read the, you know, the statement as to why the proposed energy model is a good one. I've read the criticisms of that from the public, and I've read their responses to that criticism again from the applicant. Without going through all those things point by point, my conclusion is that at this moment for this project, the proposed energy model is the most efficient one, the best way possible. This is a project that regrettably is gonna use natural gas, but it's gonna use natural gas in a way that's more efficient than any other use of natural gas, by generating not only electricity, but also capturing the heat generated from the reproduction of electricity to heat the building. So on the heating side, I think it's the best possible option for today. And then on the cooling side, I think we overlooked the fact that it is using the lake-source cooling, and that's a huge reduction in electrical use compared to other models. So I think the idea of attaching the building to a district utility and having that utility be upgradable in the future to better technologies as they emerge is the right way to go. Now, the important thing that I've heard to, heard to date, I think the really important thing I've heard today from Adam is that were we to require an EIS, that there wouldn't be a lot of forthcoming information?
I don't wanna say that you're absolutely not doing anything else.
That's wrong.
Scoping would determine what will be analyzed in an EIS. All I would say is, if I were preparing the EIS or the draft scope, I would scope it based on the analysis that was provided here, and this would be typically what's expected in an EIS seeker would be.
So absent there being some sort of large piece of information that we're missing, based on what we have on hand right now, Ogwad and Liman said, on the narrow issue of energy use, the energy model, I don't see any reason not to declare a negative declaration. Does any of that there?
No, but I got you.
Yeah.
I find myself in a really similar spot. I think if I'm just looking at this building as a building, it's kind of dynamite. It, it, it's, you know, on the energy approach, it's ticking way more boxes than is typical. And then there's a question of whether, you know, you can separate it from its own energy production facility that's owned by the same applicant and operated in a certain way in concert with this project. And I don't know the answer to that. I will say that whether I look at it together or separate, I come to a very similar place. I think that if I'm looking at the building on its own, then yeah, it's gonna use that energy really efficiently. If I'm looking at it with the power plant, then oh yeah, that power plant's gonna use that natural gas really efficiently. And to me, that meets a standard. Um, and, and to me, that meets a standard that exceeds the vast majority of what's become before this board, so it seems pretty inappropriate to say, well, you're exceeding these, these, the, the par, um, but, you know, it's not good enough because you're Cornell, or because we're going to rewrite the rules. Um, that gets us back to the precedent, uh, stuff from earlier, when we did hear from council, that we aren't bound by precedent. Uh, I find myself really uncomfortable with that. Uh, you know, I, I, I really like sort of having, you know, a set path that I'm supposed to follow. Uh, and so, you know, the fact that we're sort of out here in the wind by ourselves, um, means that, you know, any concerns that this board has on these lines, we need to take really seriously. Um, which is, you know, I mean, why we're going to go around this room until we all get dizzy. Um, but I feel really comfortable. I think this is a good building, I think it's built to high standard, I think there's a bunch of non-environmental reasons why it's good for the city. Um, I think that if we were to create a scale or a, a standard that for, that applied to everybody, that gave us a pos deck on this, it would be, you know, anything over X amount of units or something like that, because the only thing I see driving a pos deck here is the sheer scale of the building. Um, I'm not sure how comfortable I am with that. I don't know that I want to be a city that says, well, if you're building more than five hundred units, we're going to shove you down at potentially two-plus-year process to get them even approved when all built. Um, maybe we do, I mean, I, I, maybe we do, maybe that's the way, the way the board comes down. That seems like a big step. Um, so yeah, I, I, I find myself leaning pretty soundly towards a net deck, just on energy. Now, we haven't spent a lot of time on the other stuff, uh, you know, and I don't think we're going to till we make a decision on energy one way or the other, which is why we're focusing on that today. Uh, and I talked more than I meant to, so Matt, back to you.
Adam, can you talk a little bit about, if the DEC, I'm pulling here from the procedure for the application, the, the guidance, DEC guidance. In cases where the DEC is the lead agency or an involved agency, and the secret service would assume we would like to require environmental impact statement. Um, in cases where the DEC is the lead agency or an involved agency in a secret review, and energy or climate change impacts have been included in the EIS scope, staff should employ this policy. Staff there is only DEC policy, or DEC staff.
It is, so when they review it, they're certainly going to use the policy to comment. Um, again, were you to go down that road, I, I'd simply encourage you to use the policy, but it's a policy and it's not, um, it's not a roadmap. I mean, it, it lays out some parameters you need to consider and should consider, but it, it really, at the end of the day, it's a guidance policy. So, um, even if you were to go down that road, um, regardless of whether the DEC is involved, I would certainly strongly recommend, don't use the policies, because it, it is a basic approach, and at least you're not completely out in the wilderness making it up on your own. Um, it, it creates a, a framework, if you will. Um, but that's if you go down that road.
You know, I find myself clearly, you know, on the side of my colleagues here, for the most part, thinking that there is great effort being put forward towards the project. Does it use fossil fuels? It does. Is that a bummer? Yes, it is. Um, is it innovative in other ways? Yes, it is. Um, is it going to help out the city in ways outside of the environmental aspect? Yes, it is. It's going to help the housing market, I trust, as well as, you know, benefit the university's situation, um, for housing students, and that helps the mission of the university. Um, I still think we have analysis to do in terms of some of the energy impacts and how we discuss it, we move towards, um, our determination.
Jack, I skipped you.
You can.
No, we're back to you.
Well, um, yeah, it's not an ideal world, but, um, when I'm in this situation, sometimes ask, am I doing less bad or am I doing good? And, you know, I think Cornell wants to do good, there's no doubt. I think they're, that when they made this statement about carbon neutrality by twenty and thirty-five, whatever, I don't think they really realized what that meant. That might mean not building new buildings, that might mean reducing student populations, that might mean making more intense use of space they already have, but they're not doing that. They're doing, they're growing, like, this growth model is what's sort of driving everything. Um, so it's going to make it harder for them to meet that goal, actually. Um, but, that's their call, they made that decision, they made that benchmark and the deadline and all that. It's not my job to hold them to their own deadlines. Um, but, you know, it's, it's something, it, we all impact everybody else in, in decisions we make, and we do, and, yeah, there, there will be impacts that go beyond the campus. Um, but, yeah, I just, I don't think we're equipped yet to really be able to mandate that. Um, and I think if anyone would in this community, it would be Cornell. I, you know, um, so, do I have confidence that they'll keep trying? Yes, I do have confidence they'll keep trying. Will they make the deadline? Maybe. Uh, I don't really care, as long as they try. You know, it's, it's the, it's the person who doesn't try that gives me the nightmare, or the institution that doesn't try that gives me the real problem. So, um, every project could be made less impactful, and maybe a little more risky and or expensive, uh, but given the parameters, I think, like I say, the infrastructure isn't changing, not likely consuming more, so, yeah, I'm counting for.
You had something, Mackenzie?
Yeah, um, it may not be our job to hold Cornell to their own standard, but Lisa and Joanne, what is the city's goal for energy reduced? Metrics are being evaluated toward that goal? And the bigger question I have toward that is if we, if we give this particular project a net deck, what, what legs does this board really have to stand on towards making some serious requirements towards energy production and usage for all further projects?
Sure, I don't think that's, I think Adam probably can answer the second half of that question.
But the city of Bithika does have a goal of a percentage of reduction by a certain year?
Yes.
Something like that. Are we measuring that at all?
Not, not the way we should be.
Not enough. Are we taking any measures?
No.
Barbara, please.
This is for the board, are we, and staff, are we taking any measures towards those? I, I do not see us as a board taking any measures towards that. And I am feeling a lot softer towards this particular project, the more that I, like, reflect upon our role in not upholding it for anybody. And I'm disappointed in us and the city in that regard, and I feel really strongly that this, this, I'm thankful for the public in bringing these issues to light around this particular project. I think we have to decouple the production of energy and the usage of energy in this project, because I just think that they're separate issues, I think we have to. And I think we really have to tackle it elsewhere, and I don't totally know how. I don't know if it's through site planner view ordinance, I don't know if it's through seeker, but I think that, I think that's what is falling short, I think that's where we're falling short. I do not think that this project is falling short in the way that we as a board and a city have been. And I will feel much more comfortable declaring, provide, voting for a negative declaration if we have a very solid plan for how we will be addressing these issues moving forward.
Maybe I can jump in.
Go ahead. I don't disagree with you, but to have a solid plan moving forward might be a little problematic, because that might be five years down the road.
So, um, in terms of, like, setting a policy from the seeker perspective, um, I guess I'm going to say, no, that's probably not what you can do. So, what can a local municipality do relative to seeker? You can create a, a different type-one list, you can add things to the type-one list. You can say consumption of X, uh, cubic feet of natural gas on annual basis is a type-one action. However, we've seen some recent case law where a local municipality tried to create something on type-one drive-throughs, um, and, uh, the development division said, no, you violated seeker, because you've added things that are clearly type-two to the type-one list, you can't do that. So, remember, the, the thing to really keep in mind about seeker itself process, it does not dictate an outcome. So, you're looking for an outcome, which is different.
Which is at the city, the municipal level.
Yes, so, to the extent we're talking about doing something across the board, you're really looking at a local council that would, and obviously, common council has to find the authority to do so, and, you know, inherit the police power, yeah, all right, there's a good, healthy discussion to be had there. Um, from a seeker perspective, though, I think the issue is, again, have you identified the relevant areas of environmental concern? Absolutely, I think, on this case. Have you taken a hard look at them? You certainly had a good discussion, but you've identified some potential pieces of additional information, and I'd like to clarify those, because I think that tees it up for the next step, which is a reasoned elaboration of the basis for any decision. And, um, I, I really heard during the discussion kind of two fundamental follow-up questions. Um, you talked about decoupling, but just to be clear, the project involves, uh, heating and electricity for these buildings from the station, so that has to be part of our review. We're, if we're decoupling, we're talking about, um, that, that, that more illustrative analysis of upstream impacts, that indirect analysis. Um, but there, there are really two fundamental questions. Question one was, as a follow-up, is there anything additional the applicant can do to reduce natural gas consumption associated with this project? We're in hybrid discussion, um, throwing in additional, uh, renewable energy resources, things like that. I guess we just ask you to look at that and give us your thoughts. Um, two is, I think you're struggling a little bit on this concept of the long-term plan and, um, the goal to get to net zero, and how does that really relate to this project? Because at least two board members, if not more, have expressed that, they, they seem inconsistent. Um, the applicant on page one seventy-three, one seventy-four of their analysis has a discussion about, kind of, preparing for carbon zero, and it, it's somewhat of a, what I would call neutral discussion, and perhaps we could ask the applicant to take a second look at that, and really, I think the board is trying to understand how, for this project, how does it, how does the transition to net zero really work, and does it work? Fundamentally, what do you see as the steps? You're clearly doing some things that tee it up, the, um, switching to, from steam to water, um, but maybe you could drill into that a little more to give the board some feedback and a better understanding of that, because I think that's, that's an appropriate part of a hard look, and I think that'll give you all a better understanding of how that relates. So, those are the two issues I, I heard that I think merits some follow-up.
So, I think that was a really good summary of some of the issues that did come up here. I think our original plan was sort of come to a consensus on energy before we left, I'm not totally sure that's happening, um, but at least I, I don't hear it happening yet.
I think we're a lot closer, though.
Yeah, I mean, I do.
Yeah, I mean, I think based on the guidance we have, I think, um, ultimately, the board has to review and approve part two and part three, typically staff takes the first draft. I do think there's enough information here that we're ready to take a, a draft to kind of.
Energy section. I feel like listening, it really clarified a lot of questions I had about how to approach it, from what, I mean, I feel like it would give a basis of discussion.
Right, so, uh, let's move on to the part three, maybe, just so we can spend some time with the text, present the boxes. Um, I see, I see Lisa.
Well, I just, um, I just want to make sure that, do you agree with that, that we could draft a part three?
Well, you did, didn't you?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I did say, energy section is not really.
Yeah, the, the energy section is, is not.
The energy section is not.
Is there anyone here who wants to explain for the possible? I don't think anybody's leaning pos deck, I do think that there's a lot of, that, that everybody has questions.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think there's any, yeah, I think there's a lot of questions around the board, and so I think that probably calling it a consensus when there's as many questions outstanding as there are is not quite there. Um, that, that's all I'm saying. I don't, I'm not hearing a lot of leaning towards pos deck. Um, so yeah, I mean, maybe before we go towards the parts two and three, we want to sort of see if there's other questions to toss out there. I mean, I think that was a really good summary. Um, and I'm, I'm certainly willing to look at boxes and text.
Are you saying questions on energy specifically?
Energy specifically, I mean, we're going to have time for the other stuff, but energy is where all the controversy's been. All right, let's look at boxes. Uh, page eight, part two, item number fourteen, impact on energy. So, A, the proposed action will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation. So, there was some debate between Mitch and our, our dear counsel on this one.
I think not on this one, there's, the substation is no in EAF unless that's wrong.
Got it.
Substation is no.
Got it, got it. So, let's go on to B then. The proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than fifty single or two-family residences, or to serve a commercial or industrial use. Seems like a yes.
So, I view that as a no, because the energy system is there.
Got it.
That clarified for me.
Right, but, again, at the end of the day, it's not a big, you're already going to have some moderate to large, if we're taking the approach we talked about, there, the draft has some moderate to large checked under energy, so, yeah.
Can you give us an example of a project we've recently approved that would require an extension?
So, um, typically in a city, you do not see an extension of transmission facilities.
None of that, none of them look in this.
No, it's typically for greenfield development, so, um, I've worked on many greenfield projects where we had to extend transmission lines and, or upgrade that, and that creates a whole set of environmental impacts related to the need to bring the energy in. Here, again, just my view, not perfect, guidance, if you will, um, everything that's happening is onsite, the physical disturbance, if you will, is, is accounted for in the whistle disturbance numbers, it's, it's all within the scope of review that you're covering. Um, so, I, I lean towards no. Five.
Let's go around the room. Uh, you know, let's just, let's just be cut and dry about it. Jack, Mackenzie, Chris, or no? Jack leans no.
Three, no.
Garrett leans no. Mackenzie leans no. I now lean no. Matt?
Extension, no.
All right, so that one's a no.
So, just one little typo there, just.
Okay. Sorry.
Let the manipulation continue.
Order, guys, order.
Okay.
Lisa?
I just want to say that whether the box is checked yes or no, we're going to deal with it exactly the same way in the part three.
That's right.
You know, so, it's going to have the same, just because it's checked no, doesn't mean we're not going to look at it in the same way, it's going to be dealt with in exactly the same amount of depth, so.
Unless somehow we reason all of them are no's.
Right, which is, yeah, but we know that's not going to happen. Yeah, let's go.
Do we? But, I mean, we're going to cover everything in the part three that's on this, whether it's checked a yes, as you can see in the part three, every single thing.
Our consensus is no on that one. Um, the next one, I think in the draft is marked no, but I think this is a yes.
Yeah.
So, this is a yes.
And that's twenty-five hundred megawatt-hours per year of electricity.
Right, so, then the question is, do you mark moderate to large? And again, if you use the guidance I gave you earlier, acknowledging that there are many different ways to do it, if you exceed a threshold, we generally suggest you mark moderate to large, and then you're doing an in-depth analysis in part three.
I think the consensus on the board that moderate to large is appropriate here.
Yep.
I'm seeing none.
All right. D, the proposed action may involve heating or cooling of more than one hundred thousand square feet of building area when completed. of building area when completed. This also to me seems like a no-brainer, yes. Alright, so we've got two yeses on here, which means that there is an impact on energy, which brings us to the part three, where we move from boxes to test.
So it starts on page 13.
So Jack was bringing up, there is a box for other impacts. It's actually worthy of just a few minutes of discussion. I know some of the public comments really took the position that the energy usage was inconsistent with adopted sustainability plans for various communities, city, town, and county. And that's probably, that matters a discussion, a hard look if you will. I know we had some discussion earlier. There are certainly some high-level guidelines, but the applicant has provided analysis suggesting it's consistent. You've got some commentary that it's not. How does the board feel on that one?
Let's just go around the room. Let's make it easy.
Well, I'm advocating that we include something in box E.
Yep.
So other impacts would be CO2 production or the use of the non-renewable energy.
You read that.
What Jack mentioned and also what we, one of the questions that we had before around, as Adam said, the disharmony between goals and plans. I think already the applicant heard tonight that we're requesting more information around that. So if we're getting it already, then we might as well.
Okay.
Mark yes, we want that information.
Those are the highlights.
Mark.
Yep.
And Lisa?
I agree.
Mitch? Okay, so it sounds like there's a consensus there. Well, we'll mention both of those things in part E, CO2 production as an impact and, or a consumption, production.
Emissions.
Emissions, there you go, there's the word. And then the disharmony with local goals and plans and regulations.
Can you just clarify, talk to me, what that is, that second one? Because I think that this project really aligns with local goals.
I think it's.
In terms of energy, so help me understand it, so let's give you.
I think it's around the preparing to be carbon zero. How.
Oh, oh, you want to know more about the.
Yes.
Okay.
We're saying that that is, that there's a potential impact there because we're not clear on it.
We're probably going to need more energy.
Right.
And not to derail, but I would personally really love to know how that works if the deep drill geothermal doesn't end up happening. I mean, that's, I think everybody here believes that if deep drilling geothermal works, that this is all going to be fantastic. I think that there's a lot more gray area of what happens at that level.
I'm just curious about the carbon accounting for what's proposed versus if it was geothermal.
Let's add that to the question list. Did you catch that?
Yep.
What is it?
Say again?
Can you do a carbon accounting for what's proposed versus what a geothermal system would require?
When you say geothermal, it's just verified, so.
Or deep heat.
Deep heat.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah.
Do you understand what you're asking for?
I do, but.
Okay.
Yeah. I think I do.
I mentioned the calculation.
Yeah, I understand that, but theoretically, assuming that we have it in the future, what that would, how that would change the emissions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so when you say it's not harmon, it doesn't align with local plans, you're not talking about the city or the county or anything like that. You're talking about Cornell.
So things like the green building policy we mentioned, what else do we want to have on that list? What's the new line?
I think Cornell's own plans.
Cornell's own plans are gold, but.
So you know the green building policy, you can, you align with it, which is not code. You align with it with 16 or more energy points elite and there's 20 in its project. So it is in alignment with.
Great, I think.
Maybe we could, so the applicant has submitted information on how they think the project aligns. I think the specific follow-up question for purposes of this, this month is back to.
The Cornell.
The Cornell.
Cornell's climate action plan.
Right, so the board has identified as another potentially large impact, potential inconsistency with that long-term net zero plan and is asking you to provide additional information so that we can come to a more reasoned consideration.
Totally makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that clarity coming out of here about what you want. Now you got it.
I think, I mean, for me anyway, that just means how, like how and, how and when? How, what are the phasing out of, phasing towards carbon zero?
And how that would affect this part.
Yeah, yeah, knowing that it's being built for that.
Right.
Okay.
It's drilling down a little past the dilysis.
So let's talk a little bit about the part three. We have what looks like something like 35 minutes, a little more talk about part three. Maybe we'll get past that towards, you know, any of the other five or so things on that, but maybe not. We'll take it from the top. Start talking about the district energy system, mention lake source cooling, maybe we've got some yellow highlights, other sources of energies on campus, and then current state of earth source heating and timeline. I'm assuming they're the highlights because we don't have clarity on them?
No, just that they, I have time to add that.
Fair enough. And then climate action plan, that's one out. And then we get proposed conditions and then some of the building mitigations, building performance and that kind of thing. I think everyone's read through it at this point, but, you know, we can take a couple minutes for people to scan it, but what are people's concerns as they read through the part three, that it's not being captured, or perhaps stating things differently than they would like them stated?
So I think the missing parts are what we've already talked about.
True.
But there's a statement that I keep coming back to and I'm really hopeful about it, page 14, it's in parentheses in the second paragraph, the last sentence, in practice, Cornell may choose to sell electricity and keep the natural gas consumption steady.
Sure.
Yeah. Can Cornell commit to doing that? Why is that? I guess maybe some clarity on why it's in flux or why it's not easy to say, yeah, we're just going to keep natural gas consumption steady.
So we'll add that for a minute.
That's a good catch, Emily.
I want to say the part about building performance is not really good.
True.
But we have.
We have enough information to put in there.
I'm not hearing a lot of feedback on the part three. Are people describing?
I just think that we've already discussed the missing pieces.
Okay, I think that's fine. Let's see, so the things we outlined to go over today through the energy section, an overview of public comments, I feel like we talked about public comments very first thing in the context of council advice. We definitely did have board discussion and questions. Might be worth looking at internal and involved agency comments. What do we think? I saw a sharp intake of breath from Joanne.
No. Now I got to find you again.
I got to find mine too, for what it's worth.
Can you give a bit of overview of the issue? So we have comments from the town board and we have our student board here. Comments from Village Heights also involved. And then a lot of transportation discussion back and forth, which is kind of a moving target because we keep talking about it. So I expect that will eventually get resolved and we'll come to you with like the, you know, wherever we're stuck. And then a really important piece of information about the sewer capacity. And then the sewer capacity.
The memo from the city.
The memo from the city needs to be upgraded.
Yeah, there should be a copy on the.
Yes, yeah. There's some technical information on how to discuss. That's a synopsis probably of the involved agencies and internal developments that have been had. We're also working on, I don't have any information for each day, but we're working with fire department on fire access issues, which will also come to you under transportation questions.
The point of it works is on the sewer issue.
Can you, can you two walk us through this?
No, I would, I think you want to walk through the engineering tables, I'd invite the floor to come, but I mean, what I was going to say is that they're on it. I can't speak to the technicalities of sewers.
They're on it in evaluating it?
Yes.
Can you, can you speak to some of the town, the EFC, approaches or thoughts about energy specifically?
Yeah, it's, would you, I mean, this is right here. Would you like to give the synopsis or, this is Chris Gillespie.
Hi, I'm one of the planners in the town of EFC. I have my planning board chair to my left, friends will talk. Either one of us can speak to energy. Our board had a very lengthy discussion, or at least a few lengthy discussions about energy, and they went sort of rounded circles a little bit. And the most recent meeting that we had was October 16th, and we only had four out of the seven board members present. And out of the four board members that were present, they were sort of split on whether they could determine a significant environmental impact in terms of energy. So there was one member that had four or five different bullet points and reasoning for, yes, we should, this absolutely points to having an EIS. There was another member of the board that, that really was disappointed that upstream emissions wasn't a little bit more, wasn't calculated and wasn't included. And then she was also disappointed that there wasn't a direct communication between the applicant and members of the public in terms of, sort of, in my, in my language, it would be sort of duking it out in terms of the modeling and the different ways of looking at the energy usage. And then there was another planning board member, his position was more along the lines of, can Cornell do a better job than what they're doing right now? And the conclusion was, yes, we think that they can. But it doesn't necessarily mean that that is what would require an EIS. So unfortunately, it's not the best guidance for you guys as lead agency, but that is, is what we reported. It was the best that we could do. We did, there was not a unanimous decision as to whether the energy usage related to the project would result in a significant negative environmental impact.
Thank you very much for that. That's excellent context. Makes me feel much better about where we are.
Thank you for coming.
Very welcome.
Thanks, man. Fair enough. Is there anything that you, Lisa, or Joanne would like to add in terms of what you heard from other involved agencies on the energy portion of this project?
Well, Cleveland Heights said they're not going to make a statement about it either.
Didn't they say why?
No buildings were within code heights and they don't want to. Their issues are about traffic.
Sure.
We're working on that. Yeah, so.
Well, we want to take a little bit of time and talk about the non-energy issues coming from the other involved agencies, since we do have a little time before we schedule to adhere in here.
So I'm perhaps a good foot to bed tonight.
That would be exciting. And Lisa and Joanne, I think we're probably going to lean on you to try to help digest through these.
Well, I do think that in terms of land, water, drainage, plants, I think all of those are pretty well-developed in here and are consistent with any comments I've gotten from involved agencies.
Okay. Right, sounds like those are maybe baked into what we have.
Those are the ones that are the most complete.
Maybe we should start with land, just do a brief read-through and sharing of thoughts on that section of the part three. I will confess to not having spent much time with it, having been focused on energy, and I am the only person on the board in said position. But it might be worth starting there, since I think we may have burned ourselves out on energy for the night.
Yeah, I have a question on the deep dynamic impaction. Not really a question, but because I, you know, I read it and I, I think that we're putting in place good testing and good oversight of the surrounding buildings for vibrations. But my question is more, has anyone used this in town recently? Is there anything we can look at? It, it makes me nervous. So even though with all the precautions in place, I just wondered if there's a precedent in EFC or the town.
I don't know of a local project, but I can try and find out.
I'm just not aware of one.
Because like I said, I think it's a. Expansion project. The deep dynamic system really relies on the following, which is there's a crane that lifts a certain weight and it just drops it on the ground and it drops it in the area where the footings are going to be placed. And it's really not a noisy, it's not like driving piles where you always hit the hammer hitting the top of the pile and you can hear the cling, cling, cling. It's more of a thud of this weight that hits the ground. The issue about the deep dynamics is the vibration that it causes when it hits the ground. So for a lot of this project where the footings are, the buildings are not nearby. It's really when you get closer to the buildings is where you have to be careful, where you monitor the vibration or you engineer it. So basically, you might go to a different system if you feel the vibrations will have an adverse effect on the building, especially the older buildings. As far as have other projects in the vicinity been used that way, that's something we would have to go back and talk to some contractors because I have not been involved with that kind of a system. But, you know, we get different systems based on the location, based on what is the most prudent way to go forward with creating the best subsurface for the footings.
Do you think it'd be reasonable then, with your knowledge of the yet-to-apply in this area, to potentially suggest that the university apply monitoring to surrounding buildings to collect any information or protect those assets?
Well, I think we would be doing that if we're going to be using that system, absolutely, because A, we don't want to create any damage to the buildings and B, we want to monitor them just in case we, you know, we start seeing something, we would obviously have to re-engineer the process at that point.
Great. Given that that sounds a lot like a mitigation, that might be worth listening.
It is, actually.
Oh.
I mean, it says, their, their information says that it will be evaluated and monitored on a case-by-case basis during construction, not that this is specifically, this isn't as specific as what you're saying, little buildings to monitor, but.
I think, yeah, I think it would be appropriate to be set up slightly.
I have a question. This is related to something I mentioned earlier, but impacts on water.
Yep.
What happens here is there's an argument made that because the increased demand of potable water is less than what the creek, fault creek can provide for good. My view is maybe you could lessen your demand on that potable water so that it's not about that you'll never run out, but that you make better use of that potable water when it comes into the building. So for example, you could plum a gray water system so that your landscaping isn't using potable water when it's being irrigated as it is now, which also consumes energy for cleaning, filtration, and pumping. So I do think there's some impacts in water and that those impacts can easily be mitigated. They're just going to be just.
Well, let's discuss it. How open is the applicant to something like a gray water system?
Well, can I get some information first?
Please.
There is no irrigation. There's no potable water being used for irrigation.
There is on North Campus. You know, the presidential circle?
That's not this project.
No, but it's using potable water. So if there's a precedent for Cornell, for Cornell using potable water for irrigation, then you don't think any of the grounds near the buildings will be irrigated?
We're the landscape architects, there's not irrigation in the project.
Well, how did that change?
I don't understand what you mean.
Why is there irrigation in some parts of Cornell and not on the others?
I don't know why we're on.
I don't know why Rollin Green is irrigated, and I could find out if you'd like me to. That's not our, our project.
So for example, if through the building you were able to change the infrastructure so that non-potable gray water that came from your building is used then to irrigate something that's using potable water now, that would be a good thing, would it not?
Were you talking about like a cross-project? Were you talking about changing?
Well, I'm saying you put infrastructure into the building that would make better use of the water that's there. So the gray water could also be used for flushing toilets in the building, right? It doesn't necessarily have to be for landscaping. But in order to do that, you have to separate it and store it on-site.
Also, the arban can you see too, there's low-flow fixtures throughout it.
Right, sure.
So leave this idea that because the stream is large, we'll just be wasteful with our water, is not?
No, no, I'm not suggesting that. But I'm saying just because you're not going to suck it dry, doesn't mean that there shouldn't be some, maybe some more effort on water conservation in the building. And so, because when you, when you take less water from that creek, there's more water for existing riparian ecosystems. When it's drawn down to a point where turtles can't bathe, or, you know, whatever, procreate, there's, there's impacts. So I'm just saying, rather than using the argument that you don't ever suck the creek dry, you just put in some language about how you're making better use of water than century in building.
How about we give some language about water conservation efforts? And I think that what's in here was a, was a cut in case. At one point we were in a meeting, and you asked a question, is there enough water in Fall Creek? And we answered it. And I think it got cut in the news here and is being now interpreted as, as a, as a, as a reason to use water. It was answering a separate question, but let me get you some language about the water conservation efforts that the project does employ, and you can use that.
Well, let me put it this way, if it's the standards methods, that low-flush toilets, low-flow faucet heads, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about doing something different. That's, that's how you make, bring about change. It's not by doing the same thing over and over again, or using the same standard you used previously, but it might mean about doing something different. And so in this case, I'm suggesting it should be some language about how you could use the potable water that comes into the building and the waste from it better. And as my knowledge, there's, that is not a system that's ever been employed at Cornell, gray water management.
Okay, we'll get you some information. In the stormwater section, you're aware that all the roofs drain into the street areas?
It's not about stormwater, it's about water consumption within the building.
Okay, I'll get you what we've got. And you can see how you feel about it.
Yeah. So then there'd be less of an impact on the creeks, because you're using less potable water in everybody's house.
Though Jack, I would like to just add, I mean, it is true though, that by capturing all the water on the roofs and putting them into, by retention basins, we're recharging, so we're recharging the groundwater, and that all seeps into the creek. And that's a, that's a lot of water in this case.
But you could also use that water in the building to reduce potable water need. Why do you need potable water to flush a toilet? It doesn't make sense, but that's the way things are done. But it doesn't have to be done that way, and there's a lot of precedent where it isn't done that way.
So it sounds like the applicant's going to get back those sorts of information on that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, it's not rocket science, it's just simple. I think that something is already going, that's all.
So does the board have other comments on the land or water section? There's a lot of content here, so I'm sure that there's things to talk about. You've got a repeated paragraph in the water section, closed condition of impacts and mitigation, but I'm going to repeat it.
Yes.
Here and here, in the water.
The sectional impact on noise, there's nothing there.
We may not be there yet. What were the sections you, you encouraged us to focus on as far as the form?
Yeah, the sections that don't have anything, you know, are just out there.
Okay. But there was more than just land and water that we were open to.
So land, water, drainage, plants, and water. If you need natural areas, I think this is all done.
Those might be good areas to focus our comments and questions. I like how short the natural areas section is. I bet that was the shortest section covered from what I've done here.
Again, nothing on urban wilding?
I thought we discussed this earlier, but isn't there a discussion about the, there's basically a soccer field there now, actually tennis court, that's going to go away, be replaced elsewhere, and shouldn't just, that be in there? Is that what I'm missing?
It'll be in, in recreation, yeah. I don't, I don't know if I've done that.
Put that in.
Thanks for doing this.
All right, we're reaching eight o'clock. I think I might move this towards next steps. I think we might be about that time. I have this NCRE schedule here.
This is just really to kind of, the only reason I can do that, just to sort of show you where we stand. And I think in order to get to a discussion on the parts of, is to get to the next two steps would be to review the parts two and three completely, and to get to a seeker determination. We just need a little bit of a, I feel like we need to be a little more.
Yep.
And so what I heard, what we, with energy, I feel like, I feel like we could draft that section, and of course you can change it, but we could draft it based on what we heard from you and the information, and additional information they will give. I feel like we can draft it. Now, again, we can change it, but we'll give you a basis for that. So I feel like we could do that further.
So end of November, we talk through parts two and three, and then vote in summer?
Well, I mean, I think we have to think about how to take down the particular topic areas.
Okay.
I feel like the ones we looked at tonight are mostly done, and if you agree with that, I can make the edits that you suggested. But there are some, and notice that aren't done. Some of them are very simple, they're not going to be complicated to do. I feel like energy and transportation are the most complicated. So I would, I guess I would suggest that we focus one day on energy and one day on transportation, or both of them, and then, you know, do the other peripheral items as, as we can.
Okay. I will say that my worry is that, oh, was there a, was there a hand over my left? Oh, the applicant.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll wait back there.
Now you're fine.
When we're thinking about schedule, and I think this was really productive, and it is a complex project, and so it takes a little time, I'm wondering if there's a possibility of having another special meeting in two weeks, the focus of which is transportation, to do this again about transportation, and then be really more prepared in the November meeting to finish the part three. And maybe if you're comfortable, and it depends on where you all are at that point, with the information given to you and the conversations we have, consider voting in November. But, but that's, you know, potentially in two weeks, we have a special meeting just to focus on transportation, because I think it's going to take some time.
I am reluctant to call it a special meeting. You know, we've done a special meeting this month, have we did a special meeting last month? I thought we just did another one.
It feels like it.
Sure does feel like it. I guess not, I guess I'm making that up. So I'm, I'm reluctant to do that, if I feel like we can get there, we can out it. I was going to say, before we heard from the applicant, my worry with leading with energy next meeting is that energy just sucks up all the oxygen from the room, sucks up all the time, we get embroiled in issues that we barely understand, mostly agree with each other on, and just spin our wheels in it. So I, I would personally maybe like to save energy for last, because maybe if we have to come to a decision, we can't spin our wheels on it the whole time. I don't know how the board feels about that, or how staff feels about it. I think transportation is the next big complicated thing to tackle. I don't know, what are your thoughts, Lisa?
Well, so in terms of transportation, I feel like it's complicated and dense, but I don't necessarily feel like you have to, a lot of it just has to be resolved internally so that I can write this part. I don't know that you have to be involved in all the might be discussions about. It's like, I want to bring to you at the end of our working this out, the big issues, whatever big that we have to enable, if there is anything. So I'm not even sure it requires a whole.
Meeting.
A meeting. I mean, the big issues, and I will tell you already, the big ones that I see are pedestrian impacts, crossing Thurston Avenue.
Correct.
And then there's some intersections, there's, the town, the town had a few comments, and then there's some intersections in Koga Heights. And then the rest of, the rest of it, I feel like is just, we just need to work, and the emergency access, which is a big thing that we're working on, and that arguably could go in transportation or community character too, so it doesn't necessarily transportation. So I don't think I can prepare that in two weeks. I would rather have some time to, to get some answers and keep the dialogue going, and then prepare that for the next meeting, and maybe it ends up that we've resolved 90% of it, and, you know, that can be resolved, that can be reflected in the part three. Right now we're still, and some of it maybe isn't even an environmental issue, some of it has to get down.
Some of, some of Eric's comments, I think, are site plan review issues, some are seeker issues, so it'd be great if you could sort that out for the board.
Yeah, and I, I will do that. So.
Lisa, if we have a question on transportation, is it better to send them to you for that meeting in effort, or to discuss it?
Do you have a question about transportation?
I'd like to.
Yeah, I mean, I would love if you have.
Do it. Okay. The one, so we heard from a number of stuff the public about parking in adjacent neighborhoods. So that was, that was my main question, which I felt could be elaborated on based on these materials. You know, your material said that parking's not an issue, but that's the parking passes that are purchased. And so is there a way to understand impacts on Cornell Heights and Koga Heights to treat it? Because I feel like that's potentially significant.
So we did write a little bit about that in a letter, and so I just wanted to make sure I understand what you're looking for. So there's no, you can't park overnight in Koga Heights, right?
That's right.
Yeah, you can't park overnight in Koga Heights. So if you're a freshman or sophomore, you're not commuting anywhere, you need somewhere to, to just like, how's your car, garage? Not in the garage, but like, so you're not every day moving that. We just don't see that that's going to happen to this neighborhood as a result of this.
Koga Heights or Cornell Heights?
Cornell Heights. And, oh, Koga Heights.
Because I think you can't park overnight in Koga Heights.
That, yeah.
On a few streets.
That may be true, on a few streets. What that neighborhood experiences in reality is commuters.
Yep.
It's commuters, and they're coming in for the day, and they're parking, and they're walking over the suspension bridge. And, and the freshmen and the sophomore that, that live here are not going to negotiate a car, they have to move all the time, or switch every other, other side of the street perplex, snowplowing.
Are you sure? Because I did.
Confession.
You know that was the wrong thing to do.
From that respect now, you know, I could give this back, but I just want to acknowledge that I think it does happen. I don't know how to quantify that.
I don't, I don't know how to do that.
But I think it's, it is a problem, so I'm just putting it out there. I don't know how everyone else feels. It seems insignificant compared to some other issues, but I feel like it's.
If it's something you could possibly generate data on, I'd love to sort of address it and work it into the part three.
I mean, I think a lot, a big part of the answer also is just that freshmen bringing cars at very low numbers. And I mean, and I'm sure you're aware that that's also just an increasing trend with, you know, I mean, it's, it's, the young people today, today just are, you know, driving and car ownership is just decreasing. And all the landlords, I don't know all, but many landlords in College Town will tell you that there's much lower demand for their parking lots, that their parking spaces that they sell. I mean, you know, this is real, right?
So that's good news, then, then maybe we can talk about, did you address car, ride share? I'm sure we'll talk about this in a second.
Yes, we did.
And bike spots. Okay, so that's, that's like a bigger discussion, I think, on ways this project can help mitigate.
Right, and it is all in there. But it's good for us to hear now what, what your concerns are, so that we can bring, if there is some more information we can bring, that we can bring it for that discussion.
I can take a look, a hard look at what we gave you, and if there's more qualitative information we can provide, we can provide it. There's not going to be data. You know, but we went under the radar with that. Nobody knew until tonight. I won't fail.
What does everyone else think? Is it?
So Matt had a good idea. Can you get infraction counts from a municipality in terms of tickets for a certain violation?
I have no idea.
I'm more opposing that a lot, I don't know if that data's been collected.
I'll see what's available in the time range.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. So I can almost speak for myself here, but I think given that the part three might have been forward written, it seems to stretch that, I, you know, my colleagues will be ready to vote, to vote on it.
Sure.
Next month, but then you mentioned about trying to expedite it. Sometimes there's an alternative solution. What is it that you gain by having this approval, a neck-deck move from December to November? What's the motivation there?
So the motivation there is that, you know, we still have site plan review to go through.
Right.
And that'll, that'll take some time, and it'll, it's, there's a, there's a lot of building there to look at, and, and site sign there to look at. And the, the goal of when occupancy happens, and when the project goes into construction is this training. And so December starts to feel a little nerve-wracking in terms of not missing the academic calendar. And again, I really don't want to sound like we're shoving this, you know, the public likes to present it as if Cornell's forcing this thing, but that's all. If, if you're not ready, you're not ready. If you don't have enough information, you don't, but, and it's still more work to be done.
So, right, and, and because until we're through site plan review, we can't really finalize construction documents, right? Order materials.
Yeah.
It's getting really dangerously tight in terms of pushing us into, like, losing a year because of, because of the academic cycle and, and the construction sequencing.
Right.
That's the concern.
I mean, one thing, just a suggestion, is, is there's inherently a fair amount of overlap, of course, in the seeker and the site plan review.
Yeah.
And so maybe, I'm just, Mr. Chairman, just make a suggestion, but, you know, it might be good if we could do a quick straw poll of the board, are there sort of site plan, you know, in the course of doing the seeker, are there concerns that come up in site plan review that people are, you want to flag now, so maybe you start addressing them earlier? I'm just trying to think of a way to get, get out ahead of any issues.
It seems like a fine exercise.
Issues that people had that haven't yet been brought up. I'm, it's just a suggestion.
As your idea, I'm going to put it back on you. Any, any concerns, site plans, sort of specific, leave that to you.
I, I don't. I mean, the concerns I've had have all fallen into the seeker part of the process, but I don't want to speak further.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, the, this issue that the city brings up about the sewer, I think, is another thing that could be accommodated through design. It doesn't just have to be building a bigger pipe. So again, you could reduce, you could actually work your blackwater. There's lots of precedent for that too, but, so. But, so, yeah, maybe that'd be something that we could start thinking about. Another way to deal with this issue, or is there going to be cost-sharing? That, I don't know, but, yeah.
So it's, it's the project's increased loads to the sewer system, and then also upstream of corn and spade growth.
Right.
And, yes, Cornell will cost-share.
Oh.
Yes. Because they're contributing to the need to increase that pipe. They're not 100% responsible for it.
Sure, sure.
Absolutely.
Right. Is there something to be done with the building design?
I don't know. I think the pipes, because of barnet and other development, need to be outside regardless.
Anyways.
Right, right. But I'm.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to decrease impact if it's thought about, so there may be some ways of doing that.
So let's make our way the rest of the way around the room, just see if there's any site plan review questions, leave that to people have already from having gone through as much of the secret processes we have.
Design of building, spaces of the building. Fair enough.
Well, that's, that's your guidance there.
That's, okay. I appreciate it.
So we are wrapping up on time. I, I see some hand gestures from Lisa.
No, I'm just saying, I just want to clear, you know, for the next meeting, we will attempt to have the intersection drafted.
Right.
And hopeful, and the other, and hopefully the other sections as well that aren't transportation, I'm not sure we're going to, but I can at least outline it.
I think we should shoot to have it, I'll draft it next month.
Yep.
Otherwise, they won't even come close to being able to think about voting in December.
Everybody will do their best, I'm sure.
One question for council, didn't come to mind earlier. Adam, are there any updates to seeker expected from the state over the next couple months?
Yeah. Took him seven years to change the definition of.
Right, right.
No.
Right. I had heard that there were changes forthcoming, but that keeps being drawn out.
So the, the regulatory changes were adopted this summer. They got scaled back at the last minute, so the exciting things, to be said, there was anything exciting in the changes got eliminated. And, I mean, the seeker regulation changes are very minimal. It adds scoping, it's mandatory.
Yes.
Plays with some type one, type two definitions. Really other than that is a lot of core role or something.
All right. So with that, are there anything that any member of the board would like to bring up before I look for a motion to adjourn? Saying none, anything a member of staff would like to bring up before I look for a motion to adjourn? Saying none, is there a motion to adjourn? I saw Jack, I saw McKenzie second. All those in favor? We adjourn. Thank you, everyone, very much.
Thank you.